All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order, um, seeing that we are separate. Um, I, we're not gonna do the pledge today, if that's okay with the rest of the board. Um, so I would like to get an approval of the agenda. To have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And, all right, great. So. Next up is public, well, public comments was actually technically first, but we'll do it now. Anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on. All right, so, next up i- on the agenda is warning approval, so I'd like to read the warning. I just have to get it up on my screen. Okay, so, the Rutland Town School District Warning. The legal voters of the Rutland Town School District are hereby notified and warned to meet in person at Rutland Town Elementary School at seven P M. on Monday, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, to discuss the following matters to wit. Meeting information can be found on the G R C S U and R T S calendars on their respective websites. W W W dot G R C S U dot org and R T S dot G R C S U dot org. Number one, to hear and act upon the reports of the Town of Rutland School District. Number two, to hear and discuss the proposed school district budget. All citizens are invited to attend virtually and provide the school board with comments and ask questions concerning the proposed school budget. Number three, to transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. At the close of business, the meeting shall recess to seven A M. Tuesday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, at the Town Hall Center Rutland for voters living on the west side of Route seven, and the elementary school gym on Post Road for voters living on the east side of Route seven, to vote by Australian ballot on Articles One. The polls will open at seven A M. and close at seven P M. Articles. Number one, show the voters of Rutland, Town of Rutland School District appropriate the sum of ten million, six hundred five thousand, twenty eight dollars necessary for the support of its school for the year beginning July first, twenty twenty four. The legal voters of the Rutland Town School District are further notified that voter qualification, registration, and absentee voting relative to said special meeting shall be as provided in chapters forty-three, fifty-one, and fifty-five of Title Seventeen. Vermont statutes annotated. Said persons and voters are further warned and notified that pursuant to seventeen V S A. section twenty-six eighty H., Article Two, constitutes a public hearing on the proposed budget. Adopted and approved at a regular meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Rutland Town School District duly called, noticed, and held on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, dated at Rutland Town, Vermont, this twenty day of March twenty twenty four. And then it has room for all of us to sign that we would need to sign tomorrow. Um, I'd like to open this up for discussion. Any members have anything to add?
Where are you gonna, are you gonna leave that at the school?
So, um, yes, this will be at the school for everyone to, to sign tomorrow morning. It'll be, I believe faxed over or sent over to Pam in the front office. Sarah, does that sound about right? And then each of us would be responsible for stopping in and signing it tomorrow.
What time does the office close? Or open? Well, it wouldn't be open. What time does it close?
Sure, um, I don't, what time does, do they leave on Friday?
Um, u- usually the front office i- leaves about uh, three thirty, but we're here later. So let us know and we'll make sure we're here.
So, one thing that I, um, just read was that it said that, um, community members may come virtually. Is that something that's required, or can we have them come in person or virtually?
Are you asking?
Um, well, I guess I'm asking, is it possible for us to have the cafeteria that, the night of the twenty ninth? That this can be attended in person if community members wish to? Instead of just virtually, or does the board want it just virtual? I don't remember discussing this with Louis, so it kinda surprised me that that was put in there.
Tina, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So this is like another pre-town meeting prior to the vote?
Mm-hmm.
And does that legally have to happen prior to the vote? Or is it just best practice?
I think, I don't know that answer. In my, uh, in my opinion, I think it would be best practice, whether it's legal, like, a legal requirement or not. Um. But. I don't remember. I, I know that we discussed not having us, another special meeting this week regarding it. But I do think, I know, I know Slate Valley's doing a similar thing where they're having a meeting the, the night or the week before. Um, I don't think we're necessarily held to having it the night before, but that's just how we do it for a regular town meeting, so maybe. Um, like I said, I didn't have any discussion with Louis regarding whether it's virtual or not, or even that we were having that, this meeting. Um, so I guess, what does the rest of the board feel?
I think, I think there needs to be a, another meeting because it's a different figure.
Right.
That we're presenting to them, so we definitely have to have another meeting.
And I wanna be available to answer questions if people wanna know why it's still high. Um, it, it's impossible to bring it low, but.
Right.
Um, I think just answering questions, you know, what did we change? Why didn't we change more? Um, I think it's important to be available for that at some point, and doing it the night before like we typically do makes sense. Um, but my question is, virtual versus not virtual, and Sarah, do we have the space at e- either the library or the cafeteria for this?
We'll make it work, whatever you guys want.
Okay.
So we have lots of good fun things happening, so we have play practice that's happening in the library some evenings, uh, boys and girls clubs in the cafeteria.
But it wouldn't be at seven?
It'll be at seven o'clock.
Right, that's what it says on here.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So, we got lots of fun things happening here. We'll make room for more fun things.
Good.
Like an awesome town meeting.
Yeah.
You got it.
I mean, if we're gonna do it, I think we should set, if we can, set up the virtual as well.
Uh, hybrid.
Yeah.
Right, right now the warning reads just virtual. That's my point.
I might, I might set up the cameras so we can.
Yeah.
People can virtually attend if they'd like.
So it might be easier to do in the library, like, like we're normally set up?
Probably that would be easier, yeah.
Unless we get as many people as we did pre-town meeting. That's a little tight, but they can sit with each other.
I think it's big enough. I mean, they, you, you set up the chairs, how many chairs were there, eighty?
We set up, um, more seats for that, the last meeting, or the meeting before our last one.
Mm-hmm.
Then were available in the cafeteria. I know only a handful of people showed up, but I was hoping it would be as full as the cafeteria was for pre-town.
Yeah.
So would the board like it set up similarly as Kelly set it up for the feedback evening in the library?
I think.
With all those chairs?
Um, I.
Yes.
Or, or at least have that many available that it can be taken, like, e- even if they're in stacks, like.
Say, like, leave a stack outside as people come, they can grab a chair, come in, or they can stand.
That way, it's not as much work on the custodial staff, but we have the accessibility of the chairs if we need them.
Okay, and that's helpful, just because we had the library move a bunch of things, but it was a good thing because he went through more reorganization of the library. It was a good, it was a good practice. So we can do that the evening before, and it'll be set up as hybrid.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
As long as the rest of the board agrees.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so. Um, so let, I would entertain a motion to amend the warning then to include physical, i- either in person or virtual.
I made that move.
Oh.
Your move.
All right, Colin, I heard Colin first, so, all right, so Ca- and all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so. Okay, so, um, before we move on to the next topic, I also just wanted to state for the public, um, the summary of changes that we made last time, because I, I know that we just kind of said them very quickly after executive session and not everyone was there, so. Um, the changes in this draft include, uh, removing the Hallmark Club of forty-six hundred dollars. We decreased the legal expenses of, uh, for five thousand dollars because we were not going to, um, need as much help legally since our bond did not pass. Um, so we had increased that with the hopes that it would pass, but it didn't, so now we decreased that line. Um, we used an additional fifty thousand in surplus. Um, we adjusted for some retirement savings, um, due to some teacher changes. We removed seventh grade trip funding at twenty thousand. Um, sorry, the retirement savings was forty thousand. Um, we added one additional tuition student, which, um, this year we had seven students. We budgeted for four for next year, even though all seven are likely coming back. Um, so we were a little bit less conservative by adding a fifth student on, but we figured that it would help, um, with ex- expenses a little bit. Um, we also decreased lifetime sports by five thousand, and we increased student fees by five thousand to help with scholarships for, um, field trips and schools trips. Um, we decreased the furniture line by ten thousand, and we decreased the fuel line by ten thousand. Um, both just, um, being less conservative um, than we had been originally. So I just wanted to state that for the public, so that they know, um, what decisions we made, and that total um, change brought the budget down a hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred from the first, um, one that was voted on. So, um, next up is, uh, ballot discussion. Um, so, I, I've gotten a few emails, um, from community members asking that we send ballots to everyone um, and to increase voter turnout. Uh, we were told also that the town would likely pick up the fee, um, for that. Um, at originally, last meeting, we had decided not to because we thought um, that it was our pay, uh, we, we would be responsible for paying it, right? Um, so now that we're not responsible for paying it, and that was our reason for not setting them out, I wanted to have a discussion again to see if we had any reconsideration.
If, if the town is willing to pay for it, I think it's a great idea that we send, send out so that we get more participation in the vote. That's my thought.
Okay.
When we say "we," like, I'm paying for it either way. Um, so whether it's the school or the town, it's still us paying for it. Um, w- we just went line by line, nitpicked, you know, ten thousand dollars of furniture that we, we probably desperately need, and, and to, to spend nine or ten thousand dollars on a mailing, if people think it's important, they can show up. Um, we're giving them ample time to request an absentee to be sent to them, which we hope they do, um, as well as those folks that wanna be even more involved to register themselves in the next thirty days and get an absentee. I think there's ample opportunity to vote. Um, and I just see this un- unnecessary expense that, that the taxpayers, either on the school side or the municipal side, should be bearing the brunt of. Um, I've also heard a few people say they didn't realize when they were dropping their kids off that it was voting day, so we could put some signs out. I'm gonna, again, encourage everybody to call the town hall now that we've warned, and those, when those absentee ballots are getting ready, and get those if you know you're not gonna be here. But. I think the folks that, that have shown up both for and against this will probably remember the day. So I just, I just view it as unnecessary expense. I'm, I'd love everyone to participate, and you have an opportunity from seven to seven on April thirtieth, and you can get an absentee ballot.
Um, Tim, Abby, what are your thoughts?
Uh, ten thousand's a lot, um. I have to agree with Colin that we are, I mean, we've given them the date, we're gonna keep giving them the date, we'll send out mailers. I think it, it's important to put the voting information on all of our mailers, like we talked about, and where to vote, and all that, um, but i- i- that is a huge expense, um, coming out of bu- either, either, either side's budget, so. Um, that's what, that's all.
Tim? Oh, we can barely hear you.
Does that any better?
A little bit. No, I can't hear you anymore. Sorry. Yeah. I think he's gonna try to get back on. Um. My thought about it is, although I think it's great to try to, you know, get the vote up, or make it easier for everyone to vote. Um, I, I know that the select board was, um, well, let Tim back in. I know the select board was pretty adamant about um, how they felt it was important to send ballots out to everybody for the public safety building. But I feel like that was a, a very different scenario. That was an extra or something new and a huge expenditure. Um, this budget has to be approved. We have to approve some budget at some point. It's, it's a little bit different. And I, and like Colin said, we're paying for it on one side or the other, and we are already paying for mailing of a new information out to everyone. So, and we're going to put the information on how to contact the town clerk in there, and make sure that everyone's aware that they can request an absentee ballot, they can go into the town office and vote prior to the election, in person if they like. Um, or they can register to vote up to the same day of the vote, um, because we are a same-day voter registration state. So we're gonna include that information all on our mailing. And I feel like that's, you know, enough stamps for us to pay in taxes, especially after we just went through the budget line by line, trying to find, uh, you know, little places that we could save money. It's very difficult. And that is, oh, you know, almost a whole furniture depreciation that, or decrease that we took out. Um, Tim, are you able to speak now?
I think so. Is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just following up on what you just said. Uh, I mean, coming out of that meeting, I felt more than comfortable with the direction we were gone as far as not sending out ballots to every single person, um, given the le- the length of time for absentees to go out, the information that we were gonna put on our mailers and things like that, so I still feel good about that. Um, I mean, I'd, I'd be on board if, you know, there is, you know, everyone fell heavily in the other direction, but it doesn't sound that way, so. Um, so I'm more than happy to stay, stay the course. Um. So, that's all I got.
Um, so I, it sounds like um, I, I mean, we I can take a motion, I guess, to um. Not send them out, um. Is the board okay if Chris Howland speaks, who's the unknown caller? Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that, uh, Title Seventeen, twenty-six eighty, two C two, uh, explicitly says that the cost of mailing is to the school board, or to the school district, for a multi-school district, and that didn't come up in, uh, night before last select board meeting, but I didn't get on the select board meeting until six fifteen. That's all I've got to, uh, uh.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm off.
Thanks. So, I, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily think that we need a motion if we're keeping things the same. Um, so I guess I would just say, Jeff, did you feel like you wanted, and you're the only one that seems to be.
I, you know, I, I, I'll go either way. I just, you know, if the, if the town is volunteering to pay for that to reach out to more people to get the votes we need, then that's a good idea too. So I mean, we can, we can stay either way, but I'm just, uh, I just a little cautious about having to come back here again and do this again. The, the people won't come out and vote. I'm sorry, uh, that, that's the way this town is. But, uh, like I said, I'll go either way, but I'm, that really bothers me, that. Anyways, I'll.
What really bothers you?
It's just the fact that we don't get enough participation in this town to vote, period. It's disgusting. And it's immoral, but again, we.
So, so your reasoning.
It's been for years.
So your reasoning is it would in- improve, you think it would improve it?
I think it would improve it a lot by having everybody, oh, what's this? Everybody can, gets a chance to vote. It's easy, they don't have to go anywhere, they can vote and mail it back in. We make us, we make it that way, we make it so much easier for everybody to be able to voice their opinion in the right direction. But I, like I said, I, I, I'll go either way, but that just really I'd hate to, I'd hate to come back here again and have to do this all over.
I would too. Um, and I it just, it seems counterproductive to spend so much time trying to shave money off of the budget and then come out and spend that money, whether we're paying for it or they're paying for it, it's still town money. It's, it still affects taxes on one side or the other.
Yeah, I think we can just encourage folks, make phone calls, which I've been doing personally, um, to folks I know, um, that have not, that did not vote for whatever reason, didn't think about it, didn't get around to it. Um, I mean, we're basically, it was a fifty-fifty vote, um, a little less than three percent. Um. I've, I've only heard from folks that were in support of it, that, that didn't, for whatever reason that day, um, forgot, we're out of town, just family circumstances, so I'm just doing my best to make sure I get, I reach every folks that, that I know didn't to have them support us and, um, get a ballot if they, you know, if they, if they feel like they're not gonna be in town that day, so I think that's what we can do, um. Doesn't cost anything but my time to make phone calls, so, um, that's what I'm doing on my side. And, uh, equally like you, Jeff, I'd love everyone to participate in democracy, but, um, you know, we're trying to teach our kids to be self-sufficient, uh, 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 I'm, my job is to teach an adult. If they wanna be involved, they can be involved, and I'm gonna make phone calls to my folks that I know that wanted to be involved and just didn't, um. But, you know, if someone's int- anticipating that we're just gonna show up at their door and hand, hand-feed them the right to vote, I think, I think it's a privilege, not a right, so they gotta meet us halfway. And I think Mr. Howland's right. I mean, honestly, if someone challenged it, we can't use municipal cash on the, on the education side, so if someone wanted to challenge it, the select board probably can't pay for it anyways. So, and then right back to the same conversation, so, you know, let's be fiscally responsible, let's not, let's not waste money and get out and vote. If you missed a vote, please vote.
And, and I think including, you know, the town clerk's phone number, making it really easy for voters on our mailer, I think will be helpful too, just to make it a little easier for them to request an absentee ballot. It'll just take a phone call, and then.
I think you can even email her, I mean.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty simple in twenty twenty-four to not have to move to, to get this done.
So, I, I think this time it would be worth not doing that, just because we are nickel, we're really trying to keep our budget as tight as we can, and I don't, I, I would hate spending seven to ten thousand more than we have to. So. All right, so I don't think there's any change for that then.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't consider Rutland Town a, a voter suppression district, you know, it's you can drive anywhere in the town and.
Well, when you look at the amount of people that voted and that vote every year on everything, and being a presidential election, and the amount of people that we got off to vote was horrific compared to the people that are registered in this town. That just yeah, okay.
All right. Um, so, moving on, we are now at public comments. Chris, do you have anything more to add? Or Sophia?
No, yeah, hang on.
Oh, yes, Chris?
Yeah, all right, I, that was, uh, Title Seventeen, twenty-six eighty, G two, not two G two. Uh, but, uh, and the, the idea of the mailing first came out with the B C A meeting, uh, and, so I don't know if it's been up in front of the select board, but to Jeff's point, I don't think there's anything that says, in the statute, that says the town can't pay for it. And I think they said the total cost is seven thousand, including the printing and the other election day criteria, uh, which means, you know, staffing the polls. The statute only says you have to pay the postage, and that should only be about seventy cents times twice. Uh, and there's about three thousand, three hundred registered voters.
How many voters? I'm sorry?
About three thousand, three hundred was, uh, what was the bottom of the turnout. Uh, and it was about thirty-six point something, thirty-six to thirty-seven percent, if you wanna backfeed the numbers from, but not everybody took every ballot, so not everybody took a town ballot, nor did everybody take a presidential ballot. So. You gotta put a lot of numbers together to get the, the actuals.
So, thirty-three hundred registered voters, um, times two seventy-cent stamps, one to send it out, one for the stamp back would be four thousand, six hundred, twenty dollars.
Okay. Well, I don't know what postage is these days, I buy the forever. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, I, I mean, I, I will say that the B C A did totally recommend having us send it out, I just it, even if it's only five thousand, it still seems like for the amount of people that are going to use that. I, I mean, I do think that some people would prefer to use that than have to come in and vote. Right?
I think there's about a hundred and eight people that made a request for uh, absentee ballots once annually, according to the statute, and everybody can request the, uh, absentee ballot system, and the, the statute doesn't mention that, that's on the town if people request absentee. But either way, and, and the B C A did, you know, equated that to the Public Service Building on the, uh, the mail, but anyway, I, I really don't need to put anything more in.
Um, I also had, I found the message that Carrie Clark had sent to Mary Ashcroft regarding it, and it sounds like the postage was four thousand, eighty dollars, so it's actually closer to four thousand. The printing was more, and envelopes were a little more, for a total of ninety-one hundred for everything involved in that day, but if we're only paying for the postage, it would be less.
Lo- you want me to look it up?
Well, that, that was the email I got, um, that I was given from Carrie to Mary Ashcroft on March thirteenth, so I think that that's pretty accurate.
The, the statute reads, paragraph two, a school board may, after receiving approval of the legislative body of each member town in the district, vote to mail its annual, annual meeting ballot to an active registered voter in. in the district, vote to mail its annual, annual meeting ballot to an active registered voter in the district. In such case, the town clerk and election officials in the member town shall be responsible for the mailing of the ballots, but all costs associated with mailing of the ballot shall be borne by the school district. Not to over critique that, but that does say the annual meeting, and it doesn't refer to the special meeting. So, it all may be a moot point when it's a special, the special election. But all that special election is under that twenty-six eighty and not twenty-six forty of the normal annual meeting of the town.
So, if it's, you know, half of what we thought it was, and we send out the ballots and we do get a better turner, uh, voter turnout, will we feel happier that we sent them out and spent that little bit of money?
I'm, I'm, I'm unhappy we're having a second vote to begin with. We proposed a budget and we're here. I'm not gonna be happy either way. I don't care if it's forty, my personal opinion, I don't care if it's forty cents or forty thousand dollars. It, it's, it's people's time to, to, to send this stuff out. There's ample time. I don't want an absentee ballot sent to me. I'm gonna show up, or if I do want one, I'm gonna call Carrie and get one sent to my house. It's that simplistic. Um, and
I think the other thing is, I mean, so, you don't use it, you throw it away, we're throwing away money. You know, and that, I just, that doesn't sit well. You know, it's not like we're gonna get, if they don't use it, we get that money back. It gets thrown away. You know, um, you turn it in and it gets shredded or, you know, whatever it is, so it's four thousand dollars, so say we get fifteen more that then it, I just, that's a lot of money just to toss.
I know, because people will still come in and vote, and then that ballot likely just stay at home or have been lost.
Absolutely.
All right.
That the building didn't get a hundred percent vote, so.
All right, so, no other comments. I think we are at the end of our agenda then. So, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? So, six oh four PM, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your help.
Have a good night.
Um, yeah, Sarah?
I just, um, I know the meeting, this meeting's over, but we looked at Louis's, um, the flyer, and I just didn't know if other people were gonna look at that. Because I just think like, if on that flyer, it should state where, where you can register to vote, who to contact, the deadline to register to vote, how to get an absentee ballot.
He, he knows, he knows that. Um, I, I'm going to be meeting with him tomorrow. I'll share that too.
And I just thought, I didn't know, I just think everybody should probably look at that before it goes, and I just wanna make sure, like, um, our student numbers have that, gone up by five since, since we voted. Yeah, we're at three fifty-seven. Um, but I, when I've been giving tours to families, I have four families come into the office, I've always in previous years handed them the flyer and reminded them about voting, and Mike and I can even hand those out at card. I've been transporting some kids in the morning, but I should be back out front tomorrow. So, we can hand some of those flyers out and even people down at the I, I know Louis is gonna say it costs too much money, but maybe we can just photocopy those flyers here at school. Like, they don't need to be shiny color copied, we could just make copies, so we could just say, just a reminder, please vote, especially leading up to the deadline for absentee ballot.
Okay.
Because I didn't have any of those, like, I saw it at the board meeting, but usually Pam has them. So, if people are to, like, preschool registration happened, you know, there, there's a lot of